The time is six seventeen, January ninth, two thousand seventeen, and I call this meeting to order of the Weslaco Independent School District Board of Trustees. Item number two, establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that we have a full quorum with the exception of our absent seat. Item number three, opening prayer. Dr. Canales.
Okay, I'd like to call Mr. Rabelado up to the front for our opening prayer.
Good evening. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Memorial Elementary Counselor, Dr. Veronica Alonso.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We bow our heads, we put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Dear Lord and heavenly Father, we come before you grateful for one more day of life in this beautiful world that you have given us. With humble hearts, we ask that you send your Holy Spirit to touch our souls, our minds, and our entire being, that we may always remember to serve you in all that we do. We are blessed to be here united as a family, as teachers, counselors, administrators, school board members, but most importantly, as servants of the children of Weslaco ISD. I ask that you move us to always choose what is right so that we carry this community in the right direction. May we learn to truly appreciate all our differences and that we may love all children as if they were our own. All this we ask in your most precious name, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Beautiful prayer. Moving on to item number four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge. Dr. Canales.
Mr. Rabelado.
Okay. Tonight, the pledge of allegiance will be performed by Lorena Cerda, and she is a fourth grade student at Memorial Elementary. She is the daughter of Yolanda Cerda and Mohamed Ali Cerda. Lorena has been a member of the music memory team for two years, and her team placed first both years at the district meet. Lorena is also a member of the robotics team, which will be advancing to the area competition later this month. She is also a member of the student lighthouse committee and the newscast team. Last year, Lorena's artwork was selected as the yearbook cover, and her artwork has been displayed at the Bi-Cultural Museum. Lorena also enjoys taking panel lessons and is also involved in the Boys and Girls Club Basketball League. Also helping out tonight with the pledge of allegiance will be Maya Flores, and she is a daughter of Marina Gonzalez and Abel Flores. She is a fifth grade Superior Honorable Student at Memorial Elementary, where she is involved in many school activities. Maya is currently a member of the superintendent's advisory committee and a member of Memorial's lighthouse team. She is also a member of her school's newscast team and will be representing Memorial at the upcoming district spelling bee. Maya recently competed in the district UIL meet where she placed first in spelling and second in oral reading. She has also competed in our district science fair where she won first place honors two years in a row. Maya enjoys reading as well as playing softball and volleyball. Maya's plans are to attend the University of Texas at Austin, major in English literature. She has aspirations of becoming an author and is currently working on her first novel. If her parents are here for both these students, can they please stand up and be recognized? If everyone can please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and
Good job. We're moving on to item number five, awards and recognitions. Dr. Canales.
Okay, we have several recognitions and tonight, so we'll start with the first one, student recognitions, and Mr. Rabelado.
Okay, well, there are no awards or recognitions, but we do have a proclamation.
Okay, student recognition.
We don't have any student recognitions tonight, not tonight.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're moving to item number six, proclamation for National Guidance and Counseling Week, February sixth through tenth, two thousand seventeen. Carlos.
All right, if we can have all our counselors please stand up. I know they're here in the House today. We're going to recognize our counselors tonight, and whereas school counselors are employed in our schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to their career, awareness, and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus in ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, therefore, Erasmo Lopez, President of the Weslaco Independent School Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim February sixth through the tenth, two thousand seventeen, as National Guidance and Counseling Week.
Ladies and gentlemen, we cannot thank you all enough for your hard work. I know at times you'll have, you need to be a shoulder to cry on, then you need to be somebody to push, give the final push to get them, get them going, and then it starts all over again. Every day to you, I can imagine, is a, is a challenge, an adventure, and rewarding at the same time. I want to thank you on behalf of this Weslaco ISD School Board for all you do for our students, and I'm sure you help our teachers also, so thank you very much.
Should I let's go back to our board? We do, yes, we do have one more announcement.
Okay.
To the individuals who give their time, whether it's attending a meeting in the middle of the day, or an awards banquet at the end of the year, they are part of the driving force behind the success here at WISD. Mr. Salinas?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Canales down here to present you guys with some plaques for all your years of service and dedication to our kids and our district.
Aw, chucks, thank you. Better have a big one.
Okay, Board of Trustees, for all your hard work, many, many, many years, some of you, and even if you weren't part of the board officially, you've been serving the community in various capacities for years. So in honor of School Board Appreciation Month, January twenty seventeen, the Weslaco Independent School District, all of us in the audience and many who are not here tonight, recognize each of you for your dedicated leadership in public education and for your continued service to the children, to all the children of Weslaco. So thank you very much. So the first one goes to our new trustee, Patrick Kennedy, for one year of service. Our next Board of Trustees would like to recognize for two years of service is, it's two years of service, Mr. Andrew Gonzalez. This is twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen, year in the third. Also for two years of service, Mr. Isidoro Neto. Six years of service, Mr. Oscar Caballero, our Vice President. Eight years of service, our Board President, Mr. Erasmo Lopez. Thank you. Board of Trustees, again, on behalf of all of us, we thank you for your many, many hours of service when you're here, and we know you're working on behalf of the students and all of us when you're not here too, so I know it's a twenty-four-seven job for you as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Canales. Members of the Board, as, as we were looking at your, your month, it is a whole month of appreciation for you, you know, we said, you guys deserve a lot for everything you do for us. At this time, we have a group of principals that are going to give you a scrapbook that we created for each and every one of you, so principals, please present your scrapbook at this time to your board member that has a picture inside of it. That's how you know what's it.
You better have gotten mine.
Oh, you. What happened to you? Okay? Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
You got a lot of splaining to do.
Also want to thank the parental involvement team for helping us do those for you guys. They had a good time. It was hard finding some of your pictures. We went to your Cume folders to find pictures from your Cume folders. You'll find them in there. We went to your Facebook pages, found a few of your Facebook pages, but I hope that each and every one of you enjoy those. Also at this time, as a token of appreciation, we have baskets here for the board members. We have another group of principals who will present the baskets to our board members.
How did you find this photo?
I tell you everything, Mr. Kennedy.
From your former principal.
It's in your Cume records. We have it in warehouse. And all, and lastly, members of the board, you know, it's nice cold weather out there. We have our assistant soups and directors here to present you a nice polo jacket.
Oh.
Directors and assistant soups.
Oh, I thought it was.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and Board of Trustees and everybody in the audience, especially Board of Trustees, this is something that the entire team wanted to do. Javier Salinas took the lead, others came up with ideas, and all, everybody said, we can't do enough to tell you thank you. So everybody wanted to do something and just came up with just our small tokens of gratitude for all that you do, for our students, for our families, and for all of us, so that we can do our jobs. Thank you.
This is, this is very overwhelming. We serve to help our community, to work for our kids, to help our teachers, our principals, and, and to make this a better place. You know, we, we all lived as a family together here in Weslaco, and, and these gifts you all have brought forth to us are, are very much appreciated and not necessary, but thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure all my fellow board members feel the same way in, in saying thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Moving on to item number seven, we have public comments. We have one person that signed up, Eric Gonzalez. Eric, before you start, I need to read something to you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you are to address matters that concern the school district.
Okay.
You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting.
Absolutely.
Before you start, could you give us your, your name, full name, and address for the record?
Eric Joseph Gonzalez, and my address is seven eighteen Countryside Drive.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Gonzalez. Like I just said, I'm a, I'm a graduate from Weslaco High School in twenty fifteen, and I'm currently a UT student, where I also do serve as a player on their football team. I'm here to talk about Tony Varell. I recently received news that, you know, his job security is under attack, but I'm just here to give you just a testimony about him. I've known Coach Tony since I was a sixth grader in, in middle school. Coincidentally, I, his wife was my teacher. I basically always dreamed about playing for the Panthers on varsity, and having him as my coach made it even that much more, you know, satisfying when I got there. He's one of the most hardworking and dedicated individuals I've ever seen in my life, Monday through Sunday in the office, doing everything he can to bring wins to the community of Weslaco, but also graduate successful young men. You know, I love him like a second father. He's, he's kept communication with me since I graduated up till now, and he is a huge reason why I am currently a Division One football player in one of the most prestigious universities in the nation. As far as what the future holds, they are coming off a tough season, but I was privileged enough to coach the seven-on-seven team, and this is completely away from many of the coaches. They don't really know about it. And I saw kids come together, kids not knowing what the future holds, you know, as far as their coach goes, seeing their coach gone, but I saw kids come together and turn the corner and see if their coach stays, that there is, there is light ahead. One of those kids happens to be my little brother, and he asks me all the time what's going to happen, and I don't know, but I know, I tell him, the correct man that could lead you would be Coach Tony Varell. And I'll leave you with this. I've had the privilege to play Pee-wee football, junior high football, high school football, and now Division One college football. And out of all the coaches I've ever had, he has had the most profound impact on me as a person going forward, and he will always be the greatest coach that I've ever had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Canales.
Okay, I'll take the first report on enrollment. Wait for it to show up. Okay, this report shows our enrollment compared to last year for eighteen weeks of school. As you can see, as a district, we're down by four hundred and eighty students, with many of our campuses with a negative difference, with the exception of Memorial, who's plus four, Kleckler Held, who's plus six, Mary Hoag, plus one, Weslaco High School, plus ten, Horton is up three, Boot Camp Five, and Early College High School, up thirty, and the Elph Academy is also up twelve. I want us to keep in mind that when we looked at the data, I looked at it again today with Mr. Willis, who's in the audience, we start off the school year with eight hundred and ninety no-shows. Our principals, when Ms. Peterson facilitated a meeting last Monday with them, have talked about the importance of, or the loss comes at the beginning of the school year. So eight hundred and ninety no-shows. But we also had between August and now, eighteen hundred new students, new to Weslaco ISD, come into our system. Eighteen hundred new students. Now, of course, you think about that, but we also had two thousand two hundred and eighty that were here last year that are not here now. So it's something that we're looking at very, very carefully. We did send a report that included the number of withdrawals by campus, by month, along with the enrollments, and we will continue to take a look at the withdrawals, where students are going. As an example, before the school start window, or right at the school start window in September, we had a hundred and fourteen children who started our school here who withdrew. This is in August and September. You start school, then a hundred and fourteen left to their home country, say withdrew to their home country. We had two hundred and two that left us once they started school this school year to go to a school district outside of state. We had another three hundred and sixty-six that we have to work on a better process for recording exactly where they went by the school time. We were still trying to find out the reasons. By now, it's January, we probably found out. I'm looking at a September report. And at that time, between August and September thirtieth, we had nine leave us that started with us to charter schools. So it's, we want to start looking at data carefully to identify the patterns, but also, and most importantly, to look for the opportunities. When are they leaving? Where are they going? And what are we going to do? And how does that connect to everything else that we do in Weslaco? And sending the message that we are the choice for children. So that's the report for the enrollment. We have two more, and staff members will help out with them. So first up is Andres Sanchez.
Andres, before you get going, what did you use for our budget?
Sixteen thousand one hundred eighty-eight.
So we're, we're okay.
We're barely making it, but we're okay.
Sixteen thousand what?
One hundred.
Sixteen thousand one hundred, yeah. The slide that's showing.
Okay.
So the comparison of last year and this year for the first three, six weeks, six week periods, and we're lower on each one of them by ADA, just like the enrollment show. And the ADA for the average of the first three, six weeks last year was sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine. For this year is sixteen thousand one hundred and sixteen, so we're two hundred and thirty-three less ADA. Comparing that to our budget, our budget is sixteen thousand one hundred, like I said, so we are sixteen ADA higher than budget. So we're okay.
But we're not.
We're happy with it, but we're okay. We're not losing money right now.
But you're not making money.
No, we're not making.
No, right. Right.
Breaking even.
Okay, any questions?
What did you do last year? We?
Last year, we budgeted fifteen thousand eight hundred because we were being ultra-conservative. We ended up with sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four at the end.
Okay. Go ahead. Next, Mr. LaRosa.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Canales. This is the standard slide that we show every month for the self-funded health insurance program. As far as claims go, these claims run from September first, two thousand sixteen, to December thirty-first, approximately four months. Claims, we spent approximately three point one mil, three point two million dollars last year versus this year, four point one million. This is a difference of approximately nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars more over last year. Prescription drug costs, pretty much consistent with the market. We spent nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars approximately last year versus just a little over a million this year, a difference of a hundred and ten thousand. Our fixed costs, last year at this time, there were just a little over a million dollars versus this year, almost nine hundred thousand dollars. That's a difference of a little over a hundred thousand dollars. The difference there is last year, at this time, we paid our first installment of our transitional reinsurance fee. That is, of course, the fee that we have to kick in to Obamacare. That fee will be paid actually this month in January. I was hoping maybe that, you know, it might not happen, but we still have to pay it. So hopefully, we'll see what happens, maybe we won't have to pay the second half of the installment later on in two thousand seventeen. So that's a total of six point one million dollars year-to-date. That's approximately nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars more this year than we spent last year. As you, as you can tell, the big difference or the, the big reason for the, for the increase is, of course, the medical claims. However, looking at the claims for the month of December, it's actually looking a little more promising. We're actually almost two hundred thousand dollars less in December this year versus last year. So looking at it, I'm optimistic that our claims will start to level out finally. The second slide is the workers' compensation slide that we normally show. Claims, we've had forty-two year-to-date versus last year, forty-one, which is one more. Total medical claims, prescriptions, administrative fees, indemnity, pretty much everything all rolled up together incurred is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, six hundred and seventy-four dollars versus last year of ninety-one thousand dollars. Total paid for the month, and that should actually read December, inclusive of all plan years, was forty-one thousand dollars versus last year, forty-three eleven. Total reserves is approximately three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I have to mention also that this is, we started our second year of our five oh four program, which is workers' comp, so looking at the data from fourteen fifteen, our numbers have actually gone down significantly. So we're doing well.
Okay. Did you, I know that you had lost your safety coordinator.
Yes.
Have you looked at replacing that, or is there funds in there?
Right now, with, I am looking at it. It's pending discussion. I know that we are a little tight right now with funds, so I'm treading carefully, per se.
Well, the sooner the better. I know that's very important, that we train our personnel on safety and procedures, and work with Andres on that.
Yes, sir, will do.
Any questions? Any comments? Moving on to item number nine, consent agenda. Dr. Rivera, you have anything?
No, no.
Mr. Nieto?
No.
Caballero? Andrew, anything to pull?
No.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, can we get a motion on the remainder of the?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew to approve?
Yes, is that going to be with the exception?
Yes. To approve the consent agenda with the exception of number seven. All those in favor, should we just follow by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Number seven, let's talk about number seven.
Carlos, I just had a quick question. On these computers, are they like new or are they refurbished?
They're brand-new computers.
They're brand-new computers, and they got the three-year warranty, I think is?
Three-year warranty onsite.
Okay.
They all have eight, eight gigs of RAM, minimum. Of course, we got the two different models, between the Dells and the HPs for the different.
And they're already assigned to different campuses and all that, or?
Yes.
Everybody's getting a fair share of new computers, or do they have a system of how you distribute?
Well, we have the million dollars that you all give, give the district. That's all we ask each campus, and they decide how many Chromebooks, how many laptops, how many desktops. I get that together, and I build a quote from that. Additionally, they have their own budget, where, from local or state comp or whatever funds, and from that, they can purchase other computers.
All right. Do you know what they have in their position already as far as their computers per school? Or does that come into play to this, to where it can equalize if somebody has, I mean, I would ask for more if I could have more any day, but if somebody has a hundred and the other person has twenty, and everybody's getting ten, I would say it's an unfair distribution.
I can get that for you. I can give you that, an update.
Okay, I think, Dr. Canales, that we need to make sure that, that we equalize the amount of computers to a, you know, try to get them to a- of computers to a, you know, try to get them to a, a medium to where everybody has approximately the same amount of, of devices.
Have a standard that we're?
Right.
I mean, in the past, there's some campuses that use a lot of their local funds, or a lot of their own campus funds.
Right.
And just put more into computers and, for their campus, where others were tied, so they weren't allowed to do that. I mean, aside from the million dollars that, that you give us.
Okay, so?
But I can give you a report on how everybody stands.
Okay. Oscar, I guess I'm, what I'm saying is that, can you make your, your, your motion to say?
I don't think I need to make a motion.
Yeah, you have to approve it.
Oh, approve it?
You have to hear it and then approve it. In your motion, if you would allow the, our superintendent to determine that it's an equitable distribution.
I don't think we can make a motion, do we?
It's just a motion to?
Approve it.
Just to approve?
But if you approve it that way, can you not approve it?
Approval of?
With that, with that condition?
But like, for this one, they already have it assigned to everybody, right?
Yes.
They're already assigned, maybe for next year.
Okay.
Yeah, because what, what they ordered, it's already assigned to them.
You've already distributed what, what's coming in is already?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think most of the time, they're pretty equitable. It's like Carlos said, each principal allocates certain amount of money for additional computers. So you might know that, or some elementary schools might have more computers, but it was because their local money, or their Title I, they used it to purchase additional computers. So it depends on each principal, too.
So I hear we're, we're good, right? I mean, Ivan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the item, and even the backup, doesn't indicate which campuses it's going to, so?
Right.
It's just approval of the, the purchase for the campuses and departments.
I'll make the motion to, go ahead and approve it.
Second.
As is?
Okay.
Only discussion I wish to add is that, to the staff's credit, we went out for requests or proposals on these through the cooperatives, am I correct, right?
Correct.
And the vendors chosen were all the lowest bidders on the requests or proposals.
Correct.
And so, for that reason, I'll, I'll vote in favor of the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar and a, and a second by Andrew to approve number seven. I guess the further discussion was your part, right now, Patrick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Both, the complete agenda passes as presented.
Thank you.
Item number ten, discussion items. Intern financial report for the month, December two thousand sixteen.
Yes, we have Mr. Sanchez to present that.
Mr. Lopez, members of the board, Dr. Canales, make a report on that. December three first, two thousand sixteen, financial report on the general fund. Of the budget that we have, we have twenty-five million dollars budgeted for local funds. We collected almost nine million for thirty-five point nine percent of the budget. On state funds, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-nine million. We received forty-nine point seven million already, which is thirty-eight point five percent. And on federal funds, we budgeted fourteen point seven million, we received three point five percent, three point five million, which is twenty-three point six percent. The total revenues received is sixty-two million, which equals to thirty-seven percent of the budget. For four months of the budget that we have, that equals to thirty-three point thirty-three percent, so we're above the average, the percentage we're supposed to be receiving. On expenditures, they're broken down by function. The total budget on expenditures is a hundred and seventy point five million. On the expenditures and purchase orders, we have fifty-one point eight million incurred or spent already, and that equals thirty point three percent. Again, we're three percent less than their amount, it equals for four months of the year. So we're doing good on the budget.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you, good job. Now, item number eleven, discussion and possible action items. Number nine, discussion and possible action to approve Texas Association, a school board, TASB, school district policy update one oh six. Dr. Canales.
Okay, we'll have Mr. Garcia, who leads that, present on that one.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. We received the TASB update one oh six, which interestingly only had two policies, one legal and one local, both dealing with the same topic, which is the surveillance of self-contained special, the surveillance of self-contained special ed classrooms or other settings for special ed students. So I'm bringing the local policy to you for your approval. Just some main points on this policy. A parent, trustee, or staff member can make a request to the principal for video surveillance in a self-contained classroom or other setting. Regular or continual monitoring shall be prohibited. In other words, this is only used if an incident is reported to the campus principal. It is also not used for teacher evaluations or monitoring, or for other, for any other purpose. Once a student, once the principal gets a request for cameras for the surveillance, the principal must respond to the request within ten days. The principal will also provide advance written notice to the staff and parents of students about the surveillance monitoring. Cameras shall be operated during instructional day at all times, which means that just because a teacher has a conference period or a professional period, that doesn't mean that the cameras will go off. They need to be on during the whole instructional day. No surveillance, obviously, there will be no surveillance inside the bathroom or other area used for toileting or diapering, or where students' clothes are being changed. Also, if there is a request for surveillance monitoring, we are supposed to post notice at the entrance of each classroom. Video shall, shall be retained for at least six months unless otherwise we deem necessary to, to go ahead and retain for longer time. Video is, of course, obviously confidential and accessed or viewed only by certain individuals. Those individuals include district employee or parent of a student involved in an incident documented by a recording and has been reported to the district. The Department of Family and Protective Services is part of an investigation. A peace officer, school nurse, district administrator trained in de-escalation or restraint techniques or human resource staff member in response to a complaint or an investigation. And finally, TEA or State Board of Educat, Educator Certification or their agents, as well as part of an investigation. It's important to mention that anyone who is installing, operating, or maintaining the equipment and views the recordings is not in violation of confidentiality provisions. If an incident has occurred, a report shall be filed with the principal as soon as possible, but, but no later than forty-eight hours after the rise of the allegations. The principal or designee shall view the footage to identify the relevant portion of the incident. Finally, the principal or designee shall respond by notifying the person no later than ten days after the report is filed, whether the alleged incident was recorded in the video, and initiate steps as required by law, district policy, or local procedures. It is my understanding that there are about two, maybe three requests for surveillance cameras. So if you have any questions on this policy, Mr. Salinas, who oversees special education and, or of course, Mr. Garza, who is the special ed director, we can answer any of your questions.
So clarification, it must be requested, correct?
It must be requested.
And who can request that? What are the?
Again, the, a parent, staff member, or a trustee.
I'm going to approve the motion.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rivera to approve acceptance of the district policy update one oh six. Any discussion? I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I read through some of this, not through all of it, but I did read through some of the reports, some of the paperwork that y'all had given us, and it really says a lot about the principals. Have they been trained and have they been?
The plan is, Mr. Lopez, once you approve it, then we will go ahead and turn all this around, beginning with the principals' meeting, beginning tomorrow. It's the elementary principals' meeting, because now they're in, at different times. So we begin tomorrow, once we have your approval.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so we have a, again, I'll say, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rivera. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the replacement of the paint booth for our KATE automotive collision repair and refinishing class project at the Jo Calviyo KATE complex. Andres?
Mr. Lopez, members of the board, Dr. Canales, this is the agenda item for the board to consider approving a, for given method of construction for a project at the Jo Calviyo CTE complex. Our classes that use the automotive, they use solvent-based paint, and we're trying to switch to water-based paint. The EPA agency, Environmental Protection Agency is trying to make a mandatory. Texas doesn't have a mandatory yet, but probably come up in a year or two. Our CTE staff is being proactive in getting our equipment ready, to train our students in the best equipment possible, and what's going to help them prepare better for the future, those that want to pursue a CTE job. And to do that, we need to make some work at the CTA, at one of the shops, and we need to do this project because of the nature of the project, it's considered a construction project, so we need to make it all. Construction, ask for the board to decide on a method of construction for do it. We'd like to recommend that the board select a competitive seal proposal method, so we can put a package out. We have information, we have been working with one of the CTE instructors, Mr. Carmona and Mrs. Sandra Avila, and we have the information to put a package together to send it out. We're, we're going to have some layout that we're going to send out. In a separate agenda item, we'd like to recommend that we hire one of our engineers, a local engineer, to help us evaluate the proposals when they come in, so we can make a good recommendation to the board, hopefully, at the next board meeting. But right now, we're recommending that the board selects competitive seal proposals. We'd like for the board to decide whether you all retain the authority to rank the proposals or you delegate it to administration, and we have also included?
I'll make the motion to go ahead and go competitive seal proposals.
Second.
And delegate the authority to the administration for you all to rank them, and then approve the criteria to rank the proposals.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro Nieto to use the competitive seal proposal method for the replacement of the paint booth at KATE automotive collision repair and refinishing classes project at Jo Calviyo Complex. Any discussion?
Well, the rest of it, for them to rank it, the administration?
You want the administration, so you're going to go onto number A also?
Yeah, A, B, and C.
For?
And then approve the criteria.
Okay, and item A for the ranking to be done by administration?
The board delegate to administration.
And on B, what did you say?
A, is competitive seal proposals. B, for administration to rank, and C to accept the criteria.
Approve the point you presented, the criteria.
Okay. Okay, we're going to vote on these one at a time.
Well, all three, right?
One at a time?
I have them.
All three at the same time?
At the same time.
One motion.
Well, I'm not able to read all this back.
I will.
What I say.
Okay, we're going to use a ranking, administration's going to do the ranking on, on A. On, on, well, no. On A, we're going to go with competitive seal proposal. On B, we're going to do the ranking by administration. And then on C, we're going to approve the criteria as presented on this document. So we have a?
No second yet.
Motion by Dr. Rivera, yes, and Isidoro was a second. Any discussion? Okay, do we have the money?
Yes.
Okay, the money is, is available. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion, all motions carry as presented on number ten.
I left two agenda items there that had a revision on him, and at the bottom, there was a list of the, the funds available for facilities for all the needs.
Yes.
That wasn't the update, so.
It's there. Okay, so moving on to item number eleven, I hope that one's easier. Discussion and possible action for the board to hire Trinity MEP engineers to evaluate the existing recommendation of proposal to be received for the placement of the paint booth at KATE Automotive Complex Repair and Finishing Class Project at the Jo Calviyo KATE Complex. Now, this is to review the documents and everything for the project we just approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Andrew Gonzalez. Is there any discussion?
They're an authorized vendor for WISD?
No, well, we worked with them before, nah, they're not part of a co-op here, but we have used them before, yes. Several times.
Oh, okay.
And we're, we're happy with the work they've done for us.
All right, sounds good.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action for the board to approve releasing a request for qualification statement for architectural services. Andres?
Yes. The board, so where we, we've been having meetings with Facilities Committee of the District and South Committee, and we have a, a list of projects that we have. We did a ranking at the South Facilities Committee, South Committee for Facilities, and we want to present it to the board for board approval of the whole ranking in February. The committee ranked re-roofing improvements project for district-wide at the number one project, so we figure everybody was concerned that that would be the main project to do. So we wanted to get going with it, but eventually, we're going to need the other projects. The list that you have shows about eighty million dollars of money available for projects. There's several projects that, the ranking that we have will need construction, so we'll need architects. So what we want it to do is, ask for the board to approve, to go out for qualifications, an RFQ, as it's called, to get architect services. And depending on what we get, for the board to select a group, three, four, five architects. We've done it in the past, we did it back in two thousand eight, I believe.
Right.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
And as we come up?
You're just, you're just going to go ahead and ask?
Right.
RFQs?
Yes.
And the board will decide on the projects?
Yes, we'll have a?
You just want to list it?
Yes.
And then we'll rank them, we'll, we'll decide. I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Oscar to approve, to approve releasing request for qualification statement for architectural services. Any comments? Statements? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of improvements to Lucky Stadium for, one, installation of new artificial turf, and, two, resurfacing of track. Item A, board determination of procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. And item B, board determination to retain the authority to rank the, or B, is it A or B, right? That's what we're doing here?
No, A.
A and B. Board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. Go ahead.
And Nancy.
Ooh. Okay, we got to see approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking and proposal. I'm sorry I missed that.
On this one, I'm going to delegate to Coach Oscar Rios to make a presentation. Two minutes, no more than that.
No more than two minutes, I promise. Good evening, Mr. Lopez and Dr. Canales, members of the board.
Coach, speak up, so we?
They're speakers.
Sorry, I forgot, we don't have speakers, so I have to use my loud voice. So we've been working with our, our artificial turf here for the last ten years, we've had the turf for ten years. Our track is going on its eighth year, and we have noticed that, or we have been worried about the safety of, of the surface. The slippage is happening, we've lost a lot of integrity of the turf. This turf is still safe, this, this fall, we took precautionary measures. We did call Helus to come in and do a GMAX test, which is probably one of the most important things. The GMAX test will test how the impact of the facility is, and if, if it's deemed unsafe, then of course, we cannot use the facility. We scored at a one thirty-five, which is very, very good. Anything above one sixty-five is deemed unsafe. We were at a one thirty-five, which is way below the threshold. So we were able to finalize the season, we've lost a lot of fiber, it's just, it just goes with the wear and tear of the field. I want to mention that when we installed the field ten years ago, members of the board, superintendent at the time, we took the extra precautionary measures, and we put a GMAX underneath this facility. The GMAX is what's kept the facilities its integrity and it's kept the field safe for all our kids. The, the facility is used, as you know, not only by our Wesco football program, Wesco East is, that is their home, field for their home games. We also work with the city of Wesco, Pop Warner, Tyfa, Wesco Youth Football League, soccer, track, and we also have the luxury of hosting some very big events at Bobby Lucky Stadium. So we're asking for your approval to go out and start working on getting a new turf facility out there so that we can have, continue to have that player, playability surface, and out there so that we can have, continue to have that player, playability surface and also have the very best facility that was, that the valley has.
How old is this turf?
10 years old.
Coach, you said we had some falls?
Sir?
You said we had some falls already?
Yes, you know, just in observing throughout the year, the football season, especially when we had a wet day. Remember, the turf is designed in basically three components. So what, what the turf wants to do, the companies want to do, is they want to create the safest field they can. Number two, they want to create the best field that they can that is as equal to a regular playing field. So what's happening is, what happens is you have three components. You have your fiber, you have your pea gravel, and you have your crumb rubber. Those three together are what give you your playability. We have lost the fiber over the years. If you notice, when you're on the very top of the press box, you can see a lot of black spots. This is basically just the fiber that we've lost over the years. I mean, the turf has, has surpassed and has given us the life that it was, that we expected it to, and we're very happy. At the time, again, that was the very best turf that you can buy. Things have changed in 10 years now, it's no longer, it's now a fiber that is made all monofilament. Back then, it was microfilament. So they've improved on the fiber, so you should, we should get better longevity from the new turf.
And the people who've fallen, are they okay?
Oh, yes, it's just, you know, unfortunately, it goes both ways, but unfortunately, it's, it's our quarterback when it's drawing back and it's trying to make a cut, or, or, you know, our fullback or somebody, you know, that, where they'll lose their feet, you know, it doesn't happen very often, but it did happen.
What type of field does Wesco East have?
They have a field turf, company field turf.
And when comparing fibers?
They all have...
Is it the newer fiber or is it the old?
Oh, yes, very different. That's an all monofilament fiber, this is a microfiber, way different. Again, new technology, yes, sir, new technology.
So move, to approve.
I move to approve. And so, I'll second.
Well, there's, there's three components to this one as well.
Yeah. Coach is going all three?
Correct. The method of construction, the authority to the administration, and the use for ranking the proposals, approval of the criteria.
Competitive seal proposal.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, on item number 13, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew. You stated, Isidoro, to go with, to approve first of all, and to go with board determination for, what board determination do you want to use on item A?
Competitive seal.
Competitive seal.
Give authority to administration to rank the proposal.
And then give the authority to administration to rank, and item number C would be to use the criteria provided.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have several questions. Andres, first of all?
Yes, sir.
The amount here is, is it for the, for the turf and for the track?
Both together.
That looks pretty low, 650 for both.
Well, we're not doing the entire top of work we did the first time?
On the track or the field?
Both, yes, sir. Again, if I may, we'll go back to the field, Dr. Rivera. What they're going to do, the scope of the work and the easiest way to explain it is they, the company will come in, they will roll up the existing turf that we have, sir, and then they will clean up the area, they'll replace any of the boards that are on the, on the edges, and then they'll pull up a whole new carpet on top and then new pea gravel, new, new crumb rubber. On the track, again, one of the best surfaces that we have, we have the Epic 4000, the Olympics run and train on the Epic 5000. All they're going to do, sir, is grind the very top part of it, just the top part, and they're going to re-coat the top and re-stripe the top, so it's, yes, sir.
And Andres, you have this budgeted? That was part of the, the figure you gave us?
Yes, sir.
Of the 13, 13 million?
Yes, yes. The amount I had there has already this amount deducted, so it'll be covered. What do you know the exact amount? We'll do a budget amendment for what approval.
I, I like the project, it needs to be done, but I know we have a lot of other needs throughout the school district. So there's no strategic plan right now as to, as to what are the main, what are, what are the main other concerns that we have for facilities? Do, is there, is there a plan?
Yes, that's what we're working on, we'd like to present it to the board in, in February.
Okay. When did y'all meet on this?
We met in December.
Maybe, maybe I missed it.
Workshops.
Workshop, okay, I guess I missed it. So there is a list of all the projects that need to be done?
Yes.
There, Mr. Lopez has had that committee for the facilities.
Yeah, I guess I missed it, I missed that meeting.
But we had already budgeted, didn't we, since we did the budget?
No, that was not included in the budget, it was mentioned, that was not included.
Oh, it was mentioned, but not included.
Money for facilities.
What you need to do, Andres, is provide the list of the, of the latest projects that we have on, on the updates.
Yes.
And I don't know, did it come out on?
It was on the update already, the list.
Okay.
Or we had selected.
And the cost for a new track, new turf would be a lot more than this.
Yes.
Oh, probably over a million dollars for both.
And if we don't do it now, we'll have to redo the whole thing completely.
And this work will be guaranteed for how long?
Another 10 years, sir.
Another 10 years?
Yes, or more.
So Andres, you have the money in your budget?
Well, it's on the facilities, money for facilities, for all the needs.
Okay. No more questions?
Okay, so we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew on the improvements to Lackey Stadium. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 14, discussion and possible action for the board to approve renewal, number one, renewal of the contract for appeal and audit services with Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins &amp; Maugh, L L P, for administrative appeals and judicial appeals, if necessary, of the property value study findings as conducted by the State of Texas Comptroller's Office, or, two, to release a request for qualification statements for appeal and audit services for administrative appeals and judicial appeals of property study findings as conducted by the State of Texas Comptroller's Office.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and renew with Purdue, Brandon.
Okay.
Listen for the appellate work?
Yes.
One second. You'll second it?
I'll second Phil Dollar.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera to approve and a second by Patrick. Any discussion?
Yeah, this, this, this one item is, is for what again?
For, to do appeals with the State Comptroller's Office in case our values, when they're released at the end of January, the amounts are higher than what consider the local value, we'll lose funding. So they go back and do an audit, evaluate to see any value that can be reduced. And they have worked with that, they have done audits in four years.
That's fine.
And they brought money back to the district with the appeals.
The last agenda that I put in has paid at the end, that showed the amount.
How much was it?
650,000.
650?
Uh-huh. And there's some money on E D A, I F A.
Yeah.
Part of the one we showed us, adjustment last year.
Yeah, they've done a good job, a good job here.
Yeah.
And in Elsa, too.
Okay. All those in favor of staying with Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number 15, discussion and possible action to approve renewal of contract with Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins &amp; Maugh, L L P, for delinquent tax collection services, or, two, to release a request for qualification statements for delinquent tax collectors.
I'll make a motion to release, for a release of qualifications. I think it's been over five years since the last time I think we got qualifications for tax attorneys?
No, it's been a little longer than that. We usually had a company, then we switched to another company. We had this company for two years. Prior to that, we worked with a Lamburger company.
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion since it's been over five years and we need to, we need to go out for RFQs.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar and a second by Andrew to release a request for qualification statements for delinquent tax collection services. Any discussion?
Yeah, again, this is being my second year on the board, going into year three, Patrick's year one, Coach's two. I've never been through a process or seen what the, the attorneys do, and I think this kind of helps advise us better, given that it hasn't been in over five years, I take it. And so just for that reason only, I think it, it helps us better understand, again, going out.
Okay, so we have a motion by Oscar and a second by Andrew to release a qualification statement for delinquent tax collection services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. To go out.
We'll do it. We'll do it.
Okay, item number 16, discussion and possible action to approve purchase, purchase of interactive panels to implement tutorials and curriculum in all of elementary migrant labs, migrant PK three classes, PK through three classes, and migrant STEM classes. Dr. Canales.
Okay, for this one, we have Andres, we also have Mr. Lopez and Javier Salinas, if needed.
Last month, members of the board, we, we approved the interactive panels for the pre-K three program. These are the same panels, they go down like a table, the kids will be able to manipulate the materials that are on the panels. We'll be strictly focusing on our migrant kits because there's a migrant buy, when you buy with migrant monies, you have to only use it on migrant kits. So tonight, we're asking for your approval for these interactive boards.
Is budgeted?
Yes, sir.
For the migrant?
Yes, sir.
Make the motion, so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro to approve the purchase of interactive panels for implement tutorials and curriculum in all the elementary migrant labs, migrant PK through three classes, and migrant STEM classes. Any discussion?
I just wanted to noted that we went, again, went to the by-board and this was the lowest proposal we received.
Yes.
By about $3,500 more or less, I think.
The highest one is 86.
Well, I could support, I can get behind this motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 12, close meeting to discuss personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074, A, employment of personnel, new hires, B, resignations, C, deliberation regarding appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public office, officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. Item one, deliberation regarding possible appointment to fill vacancy at Wesco ISD Board of Trustees. The time is now 7:18, and this board is going into closed session. The time is 7:46, and we're back in open session. Item number 17, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074, A, employment of personnel and new hires. Dr. Canales.
Administration recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of contracts for certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Patrick to approve the new hires. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number B, resignations. Dr. Canales.
Administration recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the resignations of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro to approve the resignations as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 19, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment to fill vacancy on Wesco ISD Board of Trustees pursuant to Texas Education Code number 11.060.
I move to appoint Dr. Jaime Rodriguez to fill the vacancy on the Wesco ISD Board of Trustees pursuant to Texas Education Code 11.060.
Second.
We have a motion by Isidoro to appoint Jaime.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez and a second by Andrew. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have our seventh board member, Dr. Jaime Rodriguez. Item number 14, adjournment.
So move.